The September 12, 2022 Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board Meeting into session and asks that the clerk take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Schumaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item number two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
So move. Move.
I hear Voss move, County seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 That carries. Item three is approving the City of Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency's submission of the Family Self-Sufficiency Program Coordinators Grant Application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Board Communication Number 22-396.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Move and second.
Frank?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Item four is authorizing the Des Moines Municipal Housing Agency to negotiate with Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity Incorporated for the disposition and sale of 13 properties. Board Communication Number 22-408.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded.
Aye.
Six yes, one no.
Item five is I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board is adjourned.
So today we get to celebrate a 100-year anniversary of a great organization, the Isaac Walton League and the Des Moines Chapter of the Isaac Walton. So we've had the chapter for 100 years and we've had folks advocating for conservation, water quality, protection of our natural resources. When honestly, we need more groups like the Isaac. Play an important role from an advocacy perspective and from a conservation perspective and we're glad to have strong chapter here in Des Moines and.
We were the first one in Iowa.
The first one in Iowa.
First.
So that's a pretty significant thing and we're proud of that history and we want to recognize that. And I don't, I'll read the procreation and stuff if a couple of you. So whereas 2022 marks the 100th anniversary of the Isaac Walton League of America founded by 54 sports conservationists in Chicago in 1922, and whereas the newly-formed Isaac Walton League of America immediately set out to combat pollution, restore habitat, and protect wildlife, and whereas members continue to the present day to defend soil, air, woods, waters, and wildlife, and whereas the Isaac Walton League of America established its Des Moines Chapter on September 12, 1922, and whereas the chapter continuously worked for the purity of water, the clarity of air, and the wise stewardship of the land and its resources, and whereas the chapter has shown by its actions and good work for the past 100 years that it is a significant asset to the community, providing conservation and outdoor recreation that have greatly benefited the area and its residents. Now therefore, I, Josh Mandelbaum, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Des Moines, on behalf of the Mayor and City Council and the residents of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim September 12, 2022, as Des Moines Chapter, Isaac Walton League 100th Anniversary in the City of Des Moines, and I urge everyone to recognize the contributions the Des Moines Chapter of the Isaac Walton League of America has made to our community and commend the chapter for a wonderful heritage and a bright future and witness whereof. I fear to set my stick.
Thank you.
Frank, thank you very much. Like this. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Des Moines City Council. Thank you for recognizing the Des Moines Isaac Walton League for the 100 years. We were the very first chapter in the state of Iowa. As past president of the chapter and current state president, I would like to invite everyone stop by, see what we're doing. We're all about conservation and it's not just a one-stop shop. We're air, woodlands, wildlife, and soil. So I'm sure everybody can find something there that they'll agree with. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I've been a member of the Des Moines Chapter for 50 years. I've seen a lot of changes. I'm looking forward to the next 100 years and I plan to be at this 200th anniversary. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Des Moines City Council. Thank you for recognizing the Des Moines Isaac Walton League for the 100 years. We were the very first chapter in the state of Iowa. As past president of the chapter and current state president, I would like to invite everyone stop by, see what we're doing. We're all about conservation and it's not just a one-stop shop. We're air, woodlands, wildlife, and soil. So I'm sure everybody can find something there that they'll agree with. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I've been a member of the Des Moines Chapter for 50 years. I've seen a lot of changes. I'm looking forward to the next 100 years and I plan to be at this 200th anniversary. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Call the September 12, 2022 Des Moines City Council meeting to order and I'll ask that the clerk take role.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Schumaker?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. So consent agenda items are items three through 65. Item four I has been added approving alcoholic beverage license applications for the following: A, Junior South Pork Ranch, 3,000 East Grand Avenue, five-day license; B, Pavilion, 3,000 East Grand Avenue, five-day license; and C, Parlour, 4041 Urbendale Avenue, temporary outdoor service for Beverdale Fall Festival on September 16 through the 17, 2022. Item 17 has been corrected, Council Communication Number 22-411. Item 64K has been corrected, exception to the procurement ordinance competitive bidding requirement for good cause in authorizing the negotiation and execution of an agreement with 21st Century Police Solutions for consultant services for professional assessment of the police department's policies, procedures, culture, and training, $249,823. And then extra items. One, approving the First Amendment to the Urban Renewal Development Agreement with Nationwide Mutual Insurance, sponsors Mayor, County, and Councilmember Mandelbaum, Council Communication Number 22-434. Number two, approving purchase and sale contract with Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company for the purchase of 1,200 Locust Street, 1,200 Mulberry Street, and assignment of parking lot lease at 13th Street and Walnut Street, sponsors Mayor, County, and Councilmember Mandelbaum, Council Communication Number 22-435. Item three, approving waiver and consent to conflict of interest and representation by Allers and Cooney, PC of the Des Moines Airport Authority, as to an agreement between the Des Moines Airport Authority and the City of Des Moines for borrow site, sponsors Mayor, County, and Councilmember Mandelbaum. With that, I'd take a motion.
Move approval.
I'll second.
That's under consent.
Aye.
Sorry, who was the second?
I seconded. Seven yes.
Item three is approving the consent agenda, which is items three through 65. These are routine items that will be enacted by one roll call vote without separate discussion unless pursuant to council rules. Council requests an item being removed to be considered separately. On item number five, County votes no. On item 46, Councilmember Schumaker abstains. On item 48, Councilmember Westergaard wishes to speak. On item 55, Councilmember Schumaker votes no. On item 59, Councilmember Westergaard wishes to speak. On item 64E, Councilmember Schumaker votes no. On item 64K, Councilmember Bozen wishes to speak. With that, I'd take.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Aye.
Seven yes.
So that takes us to our hearing items. As a reminder for those items where public comment is not taken or to convey information generally to the council, our residents are encouraged to submit letters, emails, texts, or phone calls with additional comments or information to ensure that they are sharing information with Mayor and Council that they want, that they think is relevant and want to make sure that we are considering. For the hearings this evening, we have one zoning item, item 69. We also have a vacation hearing, two conveyance hearings, and a public improvement hearing. As a reminder for the zoning item only, which is item 69, we will hear from the parties in interest first, if any wish to speak, and then the general public. The parties in interest for the zoning items include only the applicant for the rezoning and those persons living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to whom the city has sent notices. After all the parties in interest have commented, we will open it up to any member of the public for germane comments. To aid in recognizing the parties in interest who may speak on the zoning items, I'll ask everyone else to not step to the microphone unless they're the zoning applicant or live within 250 feet and received mailed notice of the zoning. After all parties in interest have been called upon, the general public will be called upon for germane public comment, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of seven minutes, unless the hearing has ended sooner. For other hearings, any interested person may make germane comments, not to exceed one minute per person to a maximum of five minutes. As a reminder, on the public improvement hearings, only comments as to the plans, specification, form of documents, and engineer's estimate, and low bidder designation will be considered germane. All other comments will be considered non-germane. Item 66, on conveyance of an easement for an existing gas and regulator station on city property located at 106 Southeast 1st Street to Mid-American Energy Company. Do we have any parties in interest?
I see none, Your Honor. I'll move item 66.
Let me ask for general public first, but any general public? Now your.
I'll move item 66.
I'll second.
Item 66 has been moved and seconded. Mayor?
Aye.
Seven yes.
Item 67, on conveyance of excess city property located in the block bounded by Southeast 23rd Street on the west, Southeast 24th Street on the east, Mari Street on the south, and Dean's Lake on the north to Kimmon Holdings, LLC, for $566,636, Council Communication Number 22-404. We have any comments from the public? I will take. Parting interest, please.
My name is David Nelson. I represent Kimmon Holdings. And just to have any questions there about this purchase, council members, that's all.
Thank you for being here.
Not old.
I move.
I appreciate the commitment that Kimmon has and happy to move item 67. So thank you for what you do for our community and your investment in our community.
Second.
Aye.
Seven yes.
Item 68, on vacation of a portion of Locust Street and 7th Street right-of-way adjoining 700 Locust Street, and conveyance of a permanent easement for building encroachment to Lawmark LP, $1,200. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above. Open this up for comments from the public. Seeing none, council?
I'll move item 68A in pursuit of Rule 42A, waive the second and third reading.
I'll second it.
Aye.
Seven yes.
That takes us to item 69, our one zoning item of the evening. On request from Iowa Labor's Education and Training Trust Fund, Edward Eli Officer, for the following regarding property located at 4580 Hubble Avenue, to receive and file the large-scale development plan, to amend the Plan DSM creating our Tomorrow Plan, to revise the future land use classification from industrial to community mixed use, to amend the Baker PUD conceptual plan to remove approximately 6.9 acres to be rezoned to limited MX3 mixed-use district, and to rezone the property from Baker PUD district to MX3 mixed-use district to allow assembly, place of worship, and assembly and entertainment, commercial use. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. We'll start with parties of interest. Are there any parties of interest who would like to comment? Seeing none, we'll open this to comments from the general public. Are there any comments from members of the general public?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded.
Aye.
Seven yes.
That takes us to item 70. On 2022 sewer lining program, resolution approving plans, specifications, form of contract documents, engineer's estimate, receive and file bids, and designating the lowest responsive responsible bidder as Municipal Pipe Tool Company, LLC, Mark Kaler Manager, for $2,945,436.19, Council Communication Number 22-410. A is approval of the contract and bond and permission to sublet. We'll open this for comments from the general public.
If not, I'll move approval of 70 and 78.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.
Aye.
Seven yes.
We go back to.
Yes.
Think item 48? The next item is item 48, which is the 2022 Continuum of Care Grant Program Competitive Application, including non-competitive award of youth homeless demonstration program renewal and replacement grants to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, Council Communication Number 22-432. Councilmember Westergaard?
Always been supportive of affordable housing and the need for affordable housing in our city. I would just ask that next year, we would pull out the applicants and be able to vote for them separately. I had requested to vote no for the ANAWIM, and I was told that I can't do that, that it has to be all or none. So I'm going to move approval, but I just want to point out, I cannot support ANAWIM. We have a senior housing project in Ward 2, along with, they have another family unit. Last year, there's been more than 400 police calls to the units. I have received phone calls. I've met with the residents at the senior housing. You know, they tell me they can be. You know, they tell me they can be on a lease for one year, and then their rents keep going up, light bulbs are out. It's just not very safe or sanitary. And I believe that everybody deserves the right to be able to live in a clean, safe environment. And I have met with the ANAWIM executive director, and, you know, I got to say, that did not go very well. So for that reason, I'm going to support it, but I had to make that statement regarding ANAWIM, and I just hope that next year, we can pull those out to vote separately.
Second.
Thank you.
Aye.
Next is item 59. Item 59 is to receive and file the 2020 to 2021 Annual Report of the Greater Des Moines Public Art Foundation. Councilmember Westergaard?
Yes, before I move to receive and file, I just wanted—I know that everybody on council, and I know it's available out there to the public, the Public Art Foundation Annual Report. It is—it's got some really amazing things in the report outlining what the Public Art Foundation has helped with this last year. There are—there's a mobile app that you can download that will tell you where all the public art is in the city, and it's just an amazing model. They also have a brand-new executive director, Matt Greiner, who has—I don't know that he's here in the audience, but they have a brand-new executive director. So I look forward to working with him and the entire board this next year. But get out there and look at all the artwork that is throughout our city. It is really spread out throughout the city for everyone to enjoy. So with that, I'll move item 59.
Second.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
That takes us to item 64K. Item 64K is an exception to the procurement ordinance competitive bidding requirement for good cause and authorizing the negotiation and execution of an agreement with 21 CP Solutions for Consultant Services for Professional Assessment of the Police Department's Policies, Procedures, Culture, and Training for $249,823, Council Communication Number 22-433. Councilmember Bozen?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to highlight that we are going to be assessing the Des Moines Police and their policies, procedures, training, and culture. I want to thank the city manager for not only looking—I think it was four originally, but adding the two on that we had suggested, and doing the due diligence to really look at the groups that best serve all of the needs that we wanted to accomplish. I think that this is a positive step, along with the public works that we did, to say, how can we improve outcomes for not only our citizens, but also for the people that are serving in the police department, and make it the best place it can be for them to work, and also make sure that our citizens have a good, you know, a good relationship. So I appreciate the effort. I think one thing about this group, too, they were very much about getting community input in smaller groupings so that they can get good dialogue going, and I look forward—I believe they'll be starting maybe—I don't know, we'll assume how fast they start in. I know we have to get this approved, then work out those details, but hopefully, they can get started sooner than later, and we can move forward. And along with, I said, like, public works and this, we can have a very informed information on what we need to do going forward.
And I believe it's seven months from when they start to when they produce a report?
I'd like to make comment as well. I just want to make it clear to the public, this is a result of the request for a third-party investigation into the Des Moines Police. It is not an investigation into any specific incidents, but like Councilmember Bozen said, into culture, protocol, procedures, policies, and training of the Des Moines Police Department. It's going to take a deep look at those things, and so I want to thank the CCI racial justice team for your diligent work in getting something like this done. Y'all have been working really hard to get something for the community. And I think that while it is making recommendations to strengthen public safety and policing, I know that our focus is on strengthening public safety for people who are interacting with the police, and I'm really hoping that we get some good recommendations along those lines.
Do we have a—
With that, I will move approval of 64K. Second.
Second.
And I want to thank Councilmember Bozen for leadership on keeping this at the forefront and getting this through. I think we're all interested in improving service and improving public safety, and we're eager to see this process play out and hopefully improve outcomes across the board. So thank you, everyone.
Aye.
Seven, yes.
Item 71, is review of the zoning Board of Adjustment Decision Conditionally Granting a Use Variance to Allow for an Office, Business, or Professional Use in an F-Lud District on Property at 3732 Easton Boulevard, owned by Jaime Villacana. Choose One Alternative Below, Council Communication Number 22-399. A, the City Council remands the decision in order to the zoning Board of Adjustment for further study. The effective date of the Board's decision will be deferred for 30 days from the date of this remand. B, the City Council takes no action to review the decision in order. The decision of the Board will become final on October 1st, 2022. C, the City Council declines to remand the Board decision to the zoning Board of Adjustment. The decision of the Board becomes final on this date.
I would move item 71A.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there a second?
Yes. Aye.
Seven, yes.
Item 72, amending Chapter 114 of the Municipal Code Regarding Traffic Regulation Changes as Follows, Council Communication Number 22-415. A, parking restrictions, 6th Avenue, Forest Avenue, and Franklin Avenue. B, parking restriction, Pleasant Drive from Cummins Parkway to 56th Street. C, parking modification, 6th Avenue from Clinton Avenue to Douglas Avenue. D, corner clearances, 1, D1, East 9th Street and Cleveland Avenue; D2, Southeast 12th Street and East Thornton Avenue; D3, 19th Street and Lehner Street; D4, East 24th Street and Guthrie Avenue; D5, East 41st Street and Easton Boulevard; D6, 43rd Street and Forest Avenue; D7, 56th Street and Walnut Hill Avenue; D8, 59th Street and Franklin Avenue; D9, Beaver Avenue and Beaver Crest Drive; D10, North Union Street and Guthrie Open this up for council discussion?
And will you also allow speakers from the audience, as we had discussed previously, on 72B?
I'm always down for opening up to speakers to the audience, but I think that we need to be consistent with how we're doing that. We haven't opened it up to anyone else. I'm not saying don't do it this time. I'm just saying, if we want to pick and choose when we're doing that, we should be consistent, at least in the meeting, and open up all ordinance items to the speakers in the public.
Any other—
Why don't we just approve the other ones and pull B off? And continue B and go back. Since we've had some emails about that, the other ones, we haven't had any emails. Who goes to follow up on that? I mean, is it necessary to approve it tonight, or can we continue B?
We certainly could continue. The reason that was brought before us is that the line of sight does not meet the city's standards in this location. So are we going to give a variance because some neighbors don't like it? Or are we going to stick with what the city guidelines are on line of sight?
I'm not familiar with it. I just had a couple of emails today. If we wanted to have a discussion about it, we can have a discussion or—
Could we at least hear from the residents that are here?
I mean, if it doesn't meet the line of sight, why don't we listen to the city engineer?
Engineer.
I don't really need to hear—
Could we hear from someone from Steve Neber? Is Steve in the background?
They did a traffic study, I'm correct.
Yeah. The first thing, we have a request from a council member to open up for public comment, with Councilmember Shoemaker noting that we should be consistent on that. So I wanted to see if the council wants to open this up for public comment. I am certainly—
I would rather be consistent, and I don't think we typically have opened this up very often to a public comment about parking. I would rather—I guess, once we hear from the city engineer, then maybe I can make a different decision. But I'd like to hear from staff first, if that's all right, Mayor Protem.
I am okay with hearing from staff and—
Linda, you okay with listening to staff first?
It's in Josh's ward, so yes. I just had received the call, and I said—I checked with Japp, and he said it's up to the Mayor Protem to determine whether the speaker could speak.
Yeah. I'll welcome staff up for an explanation, and then I'll ask for—Linda, if you want to move after that, I'll recognize your motion. But do we have the city engineer?
I think they're in the other room, right?
All right. My name's Steve Neber, city engineer. Talking about specifically item B, we—we—the city received a concern from a resident about parked vehicles on the curve on Pleasant Drive between Cummins Parkway and 56th Street, creating sight distance concerns. There was already parking prohibited on some sections of the street, and you can find that in the exhibit in the map to show where that is. So we sent out technicians to actually go out, take pictures, measurements, and then they calculate the sight distances based on the Americans Association of Highway and Transportation Officials. It's a national standard on how to calculate sight distance, and then that's how they determine where the parking lengths are for restrictions. So this was brought to council actually back in November of 2021. Residents did express concern about the parking removal, citing concerns for speeding and that the parking was helping alleviate the speeding. And so a traffic calming study was done for the street, and that study is, has recommended some improved measures, raised crosswalk for speed humps that'll go into effect. I think it's targeting construction in 2024, but with the fact that it is a safety concern for visibility, my recommendation and city staff's recommendation is to move forward with a parking restriction.
I have a question. Do you feel that leaving the parking there until the construction is about to start to alleviate those speeding concerns, I guess, how do you balance out the safety concerns of like leaving the parking there to alleviate speeding versus removing the parking for sightline safety reasons?
Yep, that's a good question. I think the issue of actually leaving a known sight concern would be more of a concern than actually just the parking with the hope that it calms traffic. So I would recommend that we address the sight distance safety issue now.
Okay, thank you.
I have one question. Steve, did cards go out to the residents there to let them voice whether they wanted parking or didn't want parking?
So there was actually, through the traffic calming process, notifications were sent out to the residents on the street, and then some residents—and I apologize, I don't have the record of how many showed up, but a residence did come to the Transportation Safety Committee meeting. So actually, what was brought up at the Transportation Safety Committee meeting was also adding a parking restriction at the intersection at the west end at 63rd Street, 62nd. So actually, that stemmed from comments from residents that showed up to the meeting.
Did we have one resident?
It may have been. I apologize, I don't have those, you know. But yep, so that's—there actually are two parking restrictions that you'll see in the agenda or in the exhibit. There's one at 62nd Place, and then there's one on the curves. The one at 62nd Place was brought up by a resident that was responding to the notifications and, yeah.
Steve, Frank County. Quick question. Is there some accident history here, incidents?
Just checking to see if my notes, if I have that. There are—there is some—there was nine crashes over a—about a 10-year period involving 14 vehicles. It was determined, I think, that six were speed-related, but two of those six were DUIs. So—and then there is—I do want to point out, there is a speeding—that this street did meet the criteria for a traffic calming, as we went out and measured speeds. The speed limit is 25 miles an hour. The 85th percentile was usually around 30 to 31 miles an hour, so that would meet the traffic calming. But to answer your question, Mayor, there was nine crashes over a 10-year period on this street.
Thank you.
Steve, on a different note, I appreciate you putting D2 on here as quickly as I called you a couple of weeks, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah, no, thank you.
That's needed.
Well, with that said, I mean, I'll move item 72A, C, and D, 1 through 10, but I would still like to pull number B until there can be further conversations with the residents.
Is there a second?
It's a safety issue. I mean, we can't—we'll be liable if—
Let's just wait for a second.
I'm explaining why I'm not going to second a motion to something like that, because we are liable at that point, Linda, if we let this go, since he just got up here and gave that statement.
Especially when it was asked by other residents. I don't—
It was asked by a council member whether it's a hazard, so.
So, councilman—
I'll move 72—
Hold on a second. Councilmember Westergaard's motion fails for lack of a second. Now, a further motion would be—
I'll move 72A through D and 1 through 10. In pursuing a Rule 42A, I'll waive the second and third reading.
I'll second. Been moved and seconded. I mean—
Aye.
I do want to take a second and address the residents, because I know this is impactful, and it has a direct impact on specific residents. We had this conversation back last year as well, and the residents were correct to bring up safety concerns in this area. I mean, I think the safety concerns probably relate a little bit. The fact that there are speeding cars makes a sightline issue that much more challenging and difficult. So I think this is the right outcome to prioritize safety of our residents, but I do want to acknowledge that it is impactful— that it is impactful and a change for some of our residents as well. And so appreciate the work of staff and the work of council to make sure that we were discussing and considering these issues. Thank you.
Motion carried, six yes, one no.
That takes us to item 73, Amending Chapter 42, Article 8 of the Municipal Code Relating to the Disposal of Snow. Council Communication Number 22-393. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver is requested by Jonathan Gano, Public Works Director, and requires six votes. I'll open it up to discussion by the council.
I'll move 73, 73A.
Second.
Aye.
Six yes, one pass.
Item 74 is amending the municipal code by enacting Chapter 61 relating to vacant property registration. Council Communication Number 22-395. A is final consideration of the ordinance above. Waiver requested by Sue Ann Donovan, Assistant Director of Neighborhood Services, and requires six votes. B is approving and adopting administrative fees for the vacant property registration ordinance. And before I open it up for discussion, I do want to thank staff for the good work on this item. We had a work session discussing a number of these pieces. I think the code reflects the discussion of the work session. I would ask my colleagues, I had a number of questions just in reading the ordinance because I think we saw it for the first time when the agenda went live. I'm comfortable moving forward with the first reading, but I would like a little more time to digest the ordinance and work through some questions. So before there's other discussion, I would hope that we don't waive the second and third reading. So there's an opportunity to dig in a little bit more. And then I would open this up for further discussion.
I was just gonna say, I feel the same way. That was a concern that I had as well. Given that we had about two pages of question and responses to go over for this, I would like time to kind of go through that, go through the ordinance a little bit more. There were some, at least one piece that I wasn't quite comfortable with, which is the requirement of the city being able to require additional security on vacant properties. I don't think that that's really our place to put that in there or to add additional surveillance to neighborhoods that we're generally dealing with, we would generally be dealing with vacant properties in. And so unless there is more discussion, I would move just 74.
And 74B?
I don't think that we do that until we do A.
Can't do A until you have B.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Aye.
Seven yes.
Item 75, Our Request to Speak is follows. Each speaker will receive two minutes to speak and will be muted at the end of two minutes. Our first speaker is Tara McFarlane.
My name is Tara McFarlane and I'm the Director of Sales at the Sherdy Hotel, Des Moines Downtown. I'm here to discuss the growing concerns due to the unsafe activity on Sixth Avenue between Mulberry and Walnut Street. Since the hotel's opening in November 2020, the homeless, vagrants, and youth loitering activity has significantly increased to a point bringing us here today, pleading for your assistance. My job today is to share how this affects my business from a guest perspective and how that also bleeds into the, for example, of what our city has to offer our out-of-town guests. I'd like to share a few snippets of guest comments. These are their words. Positive, the staff was amazing. The negative, there was a fair amount of sketchiness within 30 to 40 yards of the front door. I was solicited by two people and another time walked outside as five people were on the corner of Mulberry getting into a fight. Beautiful hotel in addition to Des Moines. Only concern was the loitering outside and on the sidewalks by the homeless. I witnessed several police encounters. This is the only reason I will not return to the hotel, which is unfortunate. I did not feel comfortable in the area. Exceptional hotel and experience. Only issue were the people hanging around the corner and on the outside of the property. The ladies we were with did not feel safe and every time we walked by, the homeless were begging for food and money. Not sure what you can do about that given it is a public area, but it's a churn off since it's such a nice property. Hotel and rooms were great. Unfortunately, the streets around the hotel were frequented by loiters, vagrants, and unsupervised youth. Suggest working with city officials to more closely manage the area. We also have and will continue being a sought-after hotel for VIPs into the city and state, city and state. And therefore, I want to share with you who stayed with us so you can also understand how this affects those visiting our city and state. The Vice President Mike Pence, the consulate to China, the consulate to Australia, CEOs from Vermeer, Sinjanta, Farm Bureau, Kemen, and Dot Dash Meredith, as well as music entertainers including Machine Gun Kelly, Elton John, Band 311, and Carrie Underwood, to name a few. I now have companies telling me that until their problem is handled and the outside area is cleaned up, they will unfortunately take their business elsewhere, including Principal Financial and FNG Annuities. This loss attributes to thousands of dollars in lost revenue for my business. They want to be with us at the charity but do not feel safe.
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is Allison Strew.
Good evening. My name is Allison Strew. I'm the Journal Manager at the Sherdy Hotel. I'm here to reiterate the increasing concerns of the unsafe activity on Sixth Avenue between Mulberry and Walnut Street. Unlike Tara, my job is to share how this affects how I manage the business, the staff's safety, and how this deters from the over $40 million in development that's been added to the address. To share a few examples of what my team and I deal with as it relates to the unsafe activity right outside our doors. Within recent months, we have made 144 calls to the Des Moines Police Department. March 15th, youth loitering and turning into a mugging right outside the hotel's entrance. May 11th, youth antagonizing guests and hotel staff at 4:00 PM in the afternoon and continued to loiter out for another additional hour. June 17th, homeless man enters hotel carrying something made to look like an assault rifle and commits theft. July 17th, homeless man starts a fight and with a guest at the entrance of the hotel moves into the hotel lobby. August 7th, Machine Gun Kelly, celebrity, scheduled a police officer for security overnight within one hour of arrival to the hotel. August 23rd, theft of the luggage of the consulate to Australia upon arrival to the hotel. September 9th, drunk and passed out with homeless man in front of the restaurant during business hours. Paramedics and officers lined the streets for an hour to manage the situation. These are just a few of the examples of the constant issues that occur in our street and are trended with the direct feedback as Tara mentioned. With the closure of Evolve on the corner of Walnut and Sixth, no doubt a reflection of the issues at hand, the homeless are now spreading out around the corner, sleeping and setting up camp. City Code Section 70-73 states no person shall congregate, stand, loaf, or loiter upon the street, sidewalk, bridge, or crossing. As I stated earlier, we've made 144 calls to the Des Moines Police Department. We are splitting the cost for a gate to keep people out of the city alley north of, on the north side of our property. We escort our team and guests their cars because they feel unsafe. We increase staffing levels to keep a constant eye on the exterior of the building. We are doing our part to combat the issue. If what I read before is our city code, I am asking for the city's assistance in managing this direct disobedience of the code to clean up our street and keep our residents and visitors safe.
MC Lucy Holmes. She's not present. All right. D, Jeff Krugler.
So, thank you. I'm basically here to speak on essentially the exact same things these two ladies have spoken to. But my concerns go beyond the scope of a business and spread beyond, out into the entire city. I drive by trade. I see it everywhere. This is a big problem. This is exacerbating crime. We have camps off the road. I think you have to think about how this looks to people who come to Iowa, come to Des Moines. That matters. I think it matters. I think those people think it matters. But yeah, you can't go anywhere without seeing people grifting on a corner. There's trash. This is a public health and safety issue. Trash everywhere, under off-ramps, bridges, you name it. This is bad stuff. And I mean, something needs to be done. And there is some, there's some laws. This is illegal. These people are public trespassers, also on private property. The gas stations, they're all over. Some of them are sleeping outside everywhere. This is purely unacceptable. And it's mostly from what I've seen in the Des Moines proper. I don't really see this in Johnston, Milwaukee, or any of the other suburbs. But somehow, it's become acceptable here. And I don't find that acceptable. And I don't think anybody here does either. I mean, I guess, I'll cede my two minutes the rest of the time. I think that pretty well makes the point. So, but I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is RJ Miller.
RJ, before you go, if it's okay, is there anyone else who is speaking on that subject today? You are, okay, I'll wait. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, sir. RJ Miller, Ward 1, District 34. Where's the mayor at? The mayor? Oh, okay, good, he can hear me. Because I'm reporting from my district and I have some complaints. So while campaigning, I spoke to some young ladies of color and they were discouraged with the political process in the city because of how the mayor treated Ms. Shoemaker. They showed me a video of the council meeting and I was appalled and disgusted by the behavior of the mayor. As the leader of our city, you should support her as she has good ideas that she can be beneficial to the council. I think you owe her an apology. Also, if you continue treating people like this, there will be consequences on the ballot. Other constituents have reported their voices are not being heard. And they have complaints about gentrification, police misconduct, the lack of cooperation of other city officials with other organizations. The city is also not returning emails and they are transferring emails that is directly sent to the city to other individuals who they did not authorize to get those emails. Universally, since I've been going through these different wards, people are saying, you guys are not listening. We elect you guys to represent us. You guys are working against us. So I think you guys need to start listening. You guys have ears, please listen. Feel me? Feel me? And which one of you guys took this lady's email and sent it to the person who she complained to you guys about? Want to speak to that? Y'all looking at me? Speak on that.
All right. Is that all?
Speak on that?
Is that all?
Yeah, that's all.
All right.
You want to speak on that, Josh?
Thank you very much. We'll go to our next speaker. Our next speaker is Hakim Mohammed.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Hakim Mohammed, Ward 1. I'm with the Visionary Leaders of Iowa. We are a community organization striving to better the lives and well-being of the people in our communities. In the past few years, we have seen an unprecedented rise in violence amongst our youth. And we ask ourselves why. But we don't know why because we never ask. All that ends today because we can start asking now. We need to come together and create some kind of program to give our youth a voice and not just a poster boy youth. I'm talking about the at-risk youth. I'm talking about the youth fighting in schools. I'm talking about the youth involved in gangs. I'm talking about the youth who dropping out of school. We have to give them a voice. We have to listen to their voice. Because if we continue to ignore their voices, we'll see more and more parents bury their children. And we have enough blood on our hands as it is. We can't ignore the voices of the ghetto forever because eventually they'll force us the whole world to hear them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bernice Thompson.
Hello. My name is Bernice Thompson. I'm the person that RJ mentioned. I sent you, I sent you all an email. I'm the mother of Des Moines' first homicide victim. My son's name is Trishay Thompson. He was gunned down not far from here on January 9th and he passed away January 27th. I sent you all an email because I had concerns regarding this joint project that you all have, the city of Des Moines have with Akail Abdul Samad and Creative Vision. And I wanted to bring to your attention that that program actually, or that project program, whatever you call it, does not exist. Many people in the community had not heard of this Cure Violence, Violence Interrupters until I used my daughter's social media page as a platform to address gun violence. I actually believe, well, it is my belief that the city of Des Moines has used Akail and Creative Vision in this Violence Interrupters or whatever as a way to appease the black community. I also believe that it's the city's way of not addressing the concerns that the black community had as far as the police treating individuals differently based on the color of their skin. I don't think that's something that you guys, or you all are ready to, to deal with. And I think that you need to, you all need to really think about this project, this joint project that you have with Creative Vision. It's not working.
Time.
It's not working. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Adam Callanan.
Hello, my name is Adam Callanan. We're three he/him pronouns. I would like to start off just saying, somebody earlier said like everybody in the room agrees that homelessness should be criminalized. As somebody in the room, I just want to say that is not true because I do not believe that. I was a bit taken aback that somebody would say everybody in the room agrees with something. It's putting words in a lot of people's mouths. And I would also just like to say homeless people are our neighbors and housing and food is the answer, not criminalization. Into my main comments, I'd like to again reiterate, we need virtual participation options for these meetings. I'm glad that the mayor has that option, but residents and other people should have that option as well. Content warning for talking about issues with policing. On the consent agenda today, item 46, the city is hiring private lawyers to advocate for two DMPP officers in a case where they are civilly suing several people, apparently as private citizens, and the people they're including, actually included counselors as well, over a 2020 protest where police violently attacked protesters at the Iowa State Capitol. The city is not a named party in the suit, but they are now, as of this agenda, paying to offend the racist violent cops from that protest, Peter Wilson and Jeffrey George. This reeks of police union collusion. I'm not sure if the police union is involved, but it's really alarming for the city legal to be involved in this way. And what is just a bizarre, and I don't even know the words for it, of like how weird this lawsuit is because they're claiming they have privileges as officers, but they're suing as private citizens. It doesn't make sense and it's just confusing and gross for the city to be involved in it this way. In the court filing, the cops call all racial justice protesters domestic terrorists. Chief Wingard is proud to employ cops who believe that racial justice protesters are domestic terrorists. And the city is now paying to defend two specific cops in a court case where they are using that argument in a court filing that racial justice protesters are domestic terrorists is inexcusable. And it really goes against a lot of the other work that the city has done to supposedly be addressing DMPP accountability.
Our next speaker is Amy Tursey.
And if I may give you these photographs.
I can take them, maybe.
Okay, thank you.
We'll just pass them down.
Yep.
Hey, honey, is there a second?
Yes, there's a second. I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there might not be enough, but I want to make sure that you get one too. Because it has to do with the homeless.
I'll take a look.
Culture. Thank you. So my question is, is it okay to camp in the city? Can anyone answer that for me? I call the police. I have people camping on my property and they get drunk at about, you know, 5:00 and my employees are in the parking lot. They feel threatened. I call the police and the police tell me that there's nothing they can do and I need to talk to our city officials. And I get told this so many times and that is why I'm here. Because they always tell me, talk to your city officials. I'm at QuickTrip and I see the ambulance coming, which I hear, I own Exile Brewing Company. I hear multiple times a day. I hear multiple times a day, and there's a woman being wheeled out, and I ask him, is, is this a homeless person? And he said, ma'am, I can't tell you that. And I said, that's fine, I understand. I, I said, what can we do as a city and a community? What do we need to do? And he told me, you need to talk to your city leaders, we need a drunk tank. When people are passed out, on drugs, strung out, there needs to be someplace to take them besides the hospital. That was his suggestion to me. I think that our homeless shelter is the best. It is the Ritz-Carlton of homeless shelters, and it is crucial that these people that are homeless receive our services. We are undermining all the good that the homeless shelter is doing by allowing these people to come and get breakfast and dinner, a hot meal, and you can see the pictures of them all lined up, drugged out, passed out, and then I call and say, are there beds available? Yes, ma'am, there are beds available. She says, but you can't come on the first night, and you, you can't come on the second night. We have rules. We have rules. Does our city have rules to help this situation? And this is the book Melissa O'Neill tells me to give to everybody, When Helping Hurts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam, I'm going to assume you're not speaking on this. Would you, would you mind if I make a comment?
No, they, no, we wait for them. They get to speak first.
We'll, we'll make comment.
I'll make a comment afterward?
Yeah, we can comment.
Okay, I'm Sam Davis, and I'm Ward 3. First of all, I want to say, I don't want to be here. Um, I, I'm trying to think about you guys, and, and I, I come to this analogy, it's like, we've all been to school, we've all had teachers. Some teachers were wonderful, they were there for us, they were there for the kids. The other ones are just there to be seen and have an audience. And I think you guys are just missing it, because the thing, the, the decisions that are being made is affecting everybody's quality of life. You know, the loitering, well, they're coming here for the cans, if you talk to them, you, I mean, they walk by, I give them shoes and water, I don't give them any money. They're like, oh, I've never been to Des Moines before, I'm here for the canning. Get rid of the canning, and we get rid of the vagrants. But there is a code, oh, you, you have to actually talk to the city, and they'll put up a sign, and then you can call the police, and once the sign's there, then the police can do something about it. But I just think that you guys look really good on paper. Everybody's working really hard, everybody's filling out all these forms, but the city's really, really going downhill, and it just sucks for people to try to live here. That's all.
Thank you.
I'll move to, uh, receive and file. 75, Asia J. She can make her comments after that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Move to receive and file. Councilmember Shoemaker?
I would like to respond, and I know that we don't typically like to respond to these things, but there's not really a rule against it. Um, I appreciate that there are problems that are caused in our city. I think that I agree that there is a problem. However, the problem is that people don't have housing, people don't have food, people don't have resources, people don't have these things that they need to be successful and to be safe. And I understand that that causes problems with businesses, and that causes, you know, things to not appear as good as we'd like them to. And I can tell you why these things don't happen in the suburbs, and it's because people get picked up in the suburbs and they get dropped off here in Des Moines. And what we need to be doing is providing resources. And I think that we, as a city, are trying to do that a lot of the time, and not quite meeting the need that we have in the city. And so, what I take from hearing these concerns, and we have had, I believe, an increase in concerns about panhandling, which is First Amendment, um, protected, um, by the way, but panhandling and, and loitering and people camping, we have had an increase in these concerns, and that's because we have an increase in housing issues and in financial crises and in homelessness in our city. And these are things that we need to be addressing. And that's how I feel about that, and that's the comment I'd like to make.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor pro temp, we, we also do have, uh, an ordinance in place, uh, for panhandling that also needs to be, uh, enforced.
We have no ordinance.
It, it, it is, it is a safety, it is a safety issue.
There's a pedestrian safety.
Right, there is a pedestrian safety issue for, for loitering. There's no panhandling, but there is a safety issue with one specific, when the speed is at a certain speed on a street, and you have a pedestrian there with their dog. I've witnessed this dog trying to bite a motorcycle, uh, someone on a motorcycle, especially when you haven't given them any money. This dog right here, he's always at the corner of Army Post Road and Fleury Drive. This is a, this is a, this is not safe for him and his dog. And, and we need to start enforcing that for their safety. As you go down the Southwest 9th Bridge, where there's less than one foot, there's pedestrians hanging over the bridge that someone's going to get killed. So, we do have things in place that need to be enforced. And so, yes, it is a First Amendment right, but it's also a safety issue for, for some, uh, that, that we need to be able to protect them to be able to have their First Amendment right, or else, um, that, that's not going to happen. As far as the businesses, um, I know Tara's reached out multiple times to every single person at this council, and she's had meetings, but no one is acting on anything. She, we've, we put up a gate, it's gotten worse. I mean, these are businesses trying to survive, that are paying taxes, that are, that are paying the bills at the city. And you know what? We better step up and, and do something about it, or they're not going to be here, and they're all going to go to the suburbs. And maybe that's what some of you want, sitting up here. I personally do not. As a business owner and someone that depends on people to come to our city and to spend money, I personally don't want that to happen. As a taxpayer of the City of Des Moines, that is not what should be taking place. We've heard it multiple times, we've had multiple people come in and tell us, we've had plenty of emails that has people tell us, and for some reason, we're scared to death. We provide a great service at the shelter, but you have to be sober to go into the shelter, and some folks don't. And you know what? If we need to, if we need to figure out a service where someone is drunk, or someone is on drugs, then we better, we better look and figure out what we're going to do with that. And if that's something that we've got to direct you to figure out what we got to do, I'm all for that. Because you're right, there is substance abuse, and, and you know what? That is running rapid in our city. There's meth use, there's alcohol use, there's all kinds of drugs, fentanyl. We need to figure out how to get a grip on it, and, and whether we work with primary care, or however we're going to do it, we need to come up with something. This community is way too rich to have people suffering like they are. And people out on the street, you know what? We need to find them help. But they can't impact other people's lives that are trying to provide the money to pay for our city services.
Councilmember Bowson?
I agree. I mean, everybody should be able to be safe. They should be able to walk outside of a hotel and not have somebody accost them or be robbed or whatever. Nobody should have that in any city. I appreciate many of the people that, it, they don't want to go into the shelter, they don't want to follow, in many cases, follow the rules. If they are drunk or have drug issues, that's why we're trying to work with Polk County on getting a sobering center, so that we have someplace safe to take people, so they can get the treatment hopefully they need, and get them on a course or trajectory that is in a more beneficial way. But I know a lot of the people, when you hear, I've heard more aggressive behavior on the panhandling, I've heard more aggressive behavior out on the streets than I have heard in the past. Uh, and in some form, we need to, this isn't just a Des Moines issue, because many of these people aren't from Des Moines. They're coming into this city, and I know that, you know, everybody needs help, but we need to do this collectively. This isn't just a Des Moines issue. They seem to be congregating here. I do think we need to enforce issues that we have. Uh, we need to have a better understanding where you can camp, where you can't camp, uh, and what are our actions to rectify the situation where it is in the wrong, uh, and get people to the services they need. Uh, so however we can do that with you or on the homeless coordinating council, what, we need to do a better job of helping Des Moines handle this problem. And it takes the total community, not just Des Moines, but this whole metro area. And so, whatever we can do from the standpoint of the committees that you're on, do help improve this situation for outcomes for people.
We are, we are working on those things on the homeless coordinating council, but I will say that we know that the tools that we have right now are not solving the problem. And so, we can't just say, we need to enforce more, we need to enforce more, we know that that doesn't solve the problem. And when we ask, where is camping allowed, clarifying where camping is allowed and where it's not, there isn't camping allowed anywhere. Where are people supposed to go when they don't have anywhere to live? That's the solution that we need to find. And that's the last, that's the last thing I'm going to say on that.
There is what's available at the shelter.
Right.
Period.
So.
And if there's not, and if there's not, we do have services available for them. You on the homeless coalition council know that. But you also have to follow the rules to get into these homes, right? Yes, right.
All right, let, let me.
This is Seattle, or Portland, or Denver.
Hey, come on, sir.
Yeah.
You're going to drive our brewery, I can see you driving around the ball in 10 years, we have been broke.
Well, your, your, your people, they're calling.
Sir.
I got it right here.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. We are, we are done with public comment right now. We will, these issues are important issues. We are not the only community dealing with homelessness and the challenges of homelessness. We are working on a lot of different pieces to this, including adding additional street outreach, figuring out how we develop policy to move forward. You know, one of the things that, that folks don't see, um, but we're, we're, we're trying to work through processes where we get street outreach to those folks. So at, uh, at Sixth Avenue, we've had multiple conversations with street outreach. We've also enforced, you know, one of the challenges, though, uh, and I've been there, um, you know, I walk by, by the hotel in Sixth Avenue on a regular basis. I've actually been there when an officer was waiting for the drunk tank to take someone, take someone away, probably responding to a call. Enforcement like that doesn't change that person's circumstance, because they're taken away, they're held for the time they can be held.
Homelessness do change.
Uh, they're, excuse me, excuse me. It does not change the circumstances. So we've got to work holistically. We know, I do think a sobering center is a piece of what, what we need in this community. We're going to keep working towards solutions. Uh, and I'd like to ask staff, I know folks have been in, in contact with the surety, uh, but I'd like for additional staff follow-up, uh, and conversation there.
With them and the brewery, please.
We, we can have additional conversation, both from, uh, neighborhood-based service delivery, uh, but also let's, uh, make sure Chris Johansson, uh, and street outreach folks are also, uh, involved in that as well.
I've particularly asked for a sobering center for the last four years, and nothing's happened. So I, you know, you, you guys are on the homeless coalition. I, I'd like to know where we're at with that, and who you're working with, and how we're going to accomplish it. Because I personally is after that. I've had m- many times, I've had conversations, and we're going to put it here, we're going to put it here, and then the funding falls through, and then we don't do it, and for two years, I haven't heard anything about it. So, I, I would be.
Councilmember Bowson?
I was just at a meeting with Broadlands, where they brought in the community, many communities together, and they are seriously looking at, and I think they have perspective possible site. Uh, it is getting everything in a row, but it's with Polk County, and there will be follow-up meetings. They are serious about doing it with Broadlands. Uh, the new CEO is very.
I know.
Much behind it, and I think it will happen, and it will happen hopefully within a year, this year.
Thank you for the discussion. I think we have some direction for the, the city manager. Uh, and with that, we can.
Do you have staff that's here after the meeting? Maybe they can talk to a couple of the property owners, or they're going to contact them? We have to contact.
And we can move on to our, uh, next agenda item, which I think takes us to the, oh, oh, yeah, if, I think Connie?
The mayor.
Oh, and mayor on receive and file?
Aye.
Thank you.
Seven, yes.
Uh, and that takes us, I believe, to the, to the extra items. The first item, approving First Amendment to the Urban Renewal Development Agreement with Nationwide Mutual Insurance, sponsors Mayor, County, and Councilmember Mandelbaum, Council Communication number 22-434. All right, I'll just start these couple of items by, by noting, we had a work session this morning, uh, on the Nationwide, uh, the Nationwide building and the potential for the city to acquire that property. Uh, I think this is a, a great opportunity for the city and reflects a lot of hard work on the part of city staff, uh, to look at this opportunity and to meet a number of different service needs that have been identified, both in our long-term CIP and even some needs beyond that, to figure out how we house city staff and provide the best service. Uh, so I'm excited that we have this opportunity, and I'd turn it over to the manager if you want to add anything.
Just, just a few words to the public, because yes, we had this conversation this morning, uh, at 7:30, but it is transforming in the sense that we have well over 100-year-old buildings that we're going to be able to, uh, get our staff into more efficient space, uh, designed for 21st century office uses. Uh, there, it will impact no less than six locations across the city where staff are currently, uh, working out of, and consolidate that and get the efficiencies out of having them closer together, uh, working together. So, it's, it's a great opportunity to also, uh, hit the market at its low point in the sense of, uh, avoiding the highest cost for construction by not constructing the building across the street, but rather purchasing what is vacant office space today at a very reasonable price. And it is a win-win situation with Nationwide. I really appreciate them working with us on this project, as well as all the staff. Uh, Matt Anderson led the effort, but, uh, Tom Fisher was crucial on the legal work, uh, Jim Hahn with, with the, uh, facilities, and many, many others that chimed in. So, very great, great opportunity. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And all of my comments are on the next item. The, uh, this item here in front of you is not associated, uh, with, with the purchase, but rather some cleanup opportunities and other arrangements that we had with Nationwide. So, uh, but my comments are towards the purchase.
I'll move item one then first.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Now we can go on to the other one.
Aye.
Six, yes, one pass.
Item two is approving the purchase and sale contract with Nationwide Mutual Insurance Company for the purchase of 1,200 Locust Street, 1,200 Mulberry Street, and assignment of parking lot lease at 13th Street and Walnut Street. Sponsors Mayor, County, and Councilmember Mandelbaum, Council Communication number And I think we had the, we had the discussion.
Unless Scott had anything more to say? Um, I, we've had many conversations about, um, what buildings we needed to acquire, if we were going to update buildings that we currently had or not. Um, so those conversations have been going on for months, and I, um, had had those conversations for months with staff, um, about, you know, a potential city annex, or, or buying Nationwide building, um, or updating some of our older buildings. Uh, not once in any of those conversations was the police station mentioned. I don't believe, uh, it's appropriate for the police station to be in the same building as other city services where people can go to deal with, um, city problems. I, not once was it mentioned. Uh, specifically, when I asked about, um, money that we were allocating with ARPA, I asked what that money was going to, um, and I believe that money is being allocated for, uh, renovation. Uh, police station was not mentioned when I specifically asked, police station was not mentioned, um, at any time, um, in build up to this decision, before Nationwide was a part of it, in the discussion about buying the Nationwide building. And, um, while I do think that getting this space for the city is going to be very good for a lot of our departments, uh, specifically getting IT out of the armory, I'm very supportive. a lot of our departments, specifically getting IT out of the armory, I'm very supportive of that because there has been intentional misrepresentation of the project, it has lost my vote.
Councilmember Westergaard.
I just wanted to make a comment, I fully support it. I did receive a couple of phone calls today and I just wanted to say publicly that this building is not being abandoned. The concern was, the news had said City Hall was moving and I assured the callers that no, we're not leaving. We may move some departments around like Human Services, Human Rights Department who's at River Place may come here and we may move another department to another building, but we will not be leaving this building. And as far as the other buildings, I think the, we should work on getting the message about why we need additional space. I mean, the historians have called me and said, hey, these are beautiful buildings, we don't want to see them turned into condos. I just think, I think we need to, and I know that we will work to make it the best possible use for those buildings.
Scott.
Councilmember Bozen.
I just want to, thanks for clarifying that, Linda, because I had a lot of, I had maybe the same people call. I think that the importance of this is no matter, it's a chance for us to really utilize a building to get our staff, whether it be the place, whether it be IT, whether into a more modern facility and the opportunity for redevelopment of the space. Right across the street is where we were projecting a $36 million building. So for 30 million plus a parking garage, we get everybody from three basically buildings into one. An opportunity to redevelop that land, the land down at the armory and then also the police station, which is the whole market area is being redeveloped. So I think it's a win for this community of possibility of redevelopment and it gets us into buildings where we can provide the correct space for our employees.
Councilmember Gatto.
Yeah, absolutely. Scott, I appreciate you and your team thinking out of the box and, and getting us to this point. You know, our, we talk about the, not only the police facility, but the police training facility that was built in 1973 that has one shower for a woman. And we've always talked about upgrading that. The third-party review is going to show that our facilities need upgraded, so I appreciate you getting out in front of it. And one question I did ask today to you and you answered it, I think it would be beneficial. This does not, we have 36 million in our CIP budget, this is not going to see a levy increase from our, from our tax to any, any resident, is that correct?
This is, this will not impact the tax rate.
Right.
This move.
Yep. Yes, that's, I just wanted, I think it would be, one, I did hear the same report, Linda, that you were talking about and got the same calls from a station that said that we put all this money into this building and then we were leaving this building and buying a different building. So it's unfortunate that some, some, some can't get the story correct, but I'm glad that we were able to, to put the record straight tonight. I will move item two.
Mayor, do you have anything? Mr. Mayor, do you have anything you want to add?
Nope. Appreciate the conversation and the points that all the council members have made. I am voting in favor.
I seconded, sorry, my mic was off.
Moved by Councilmember Gatto, seconded by Bozen.
Six, yes, one, no.
Item three is approving waiver and consent to conflict of, conflict of interest in representation by Alers and Cooney, PC of the Des Moines Airport Authority as to an agreement between the Des Moines Airport Authority and the City of Des Moines for borrowed site. Sponsors Mayor, County and Councilmember Mandelbaum.
Move to item three.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Carl, Mr. Mayor.
Seven, yes.
Motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
It's been moved to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible].